Fiscal affairs to order. The agenda is relatively short, mostly reports today. The first action item is approval of the minutes of the meeting from November 2, 2009. So move. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If no one's in need, motion carries. Second action item is a resolution authorizes a general counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the Office of University Controller to enter into a contract for vehicle liability insurance. Contract shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after public advertisement and sealed bidding by the Office of Control or University Controller pursuant to law and university regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1,469,400 for the initial one-year term. Contract terms shall include up to four one-year options for the university to renew in its best interest. This contract will provide single automobile insurance coverage for all vehicles owned and operated by both the senior and community colleges. No move. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, to report on both the state budgets and the city budgets. Vice Chancellor Sefianza. Matt?
Thanks, Chair Loda. Good afternoon, everyone. In your packet of information, there is a report on the state budget, state executive budget that was issued by the governor on January 19. So I want to go through this, and then we'll talk a little bit about the city preliminary budget that the mayor issued on Thursday. So the state executive budget, certainly not a good news budget for any of the state agencies, certainly not for CUNY. If you go to page two of your document, there's a bunch of chart, there's a chart at the bottom there and a bunch of numbers, and I'll go through that quickly. Our total budget for recommendation for 2011 is slightly under $1.9 billion. They actually have an increase over the current year level of $18 million. And that is made up of an $84.4 million reduction in state aid. That's offset by increases in mandatory costs. We received $91.3 million of mandatory cost increases. All of our mandatory cost increases that were included in our budget request were fully funded. In addition, the recommendation that the governor made, and that was put into law in 2010 whereby the tuition increase that was effective for this past fall of 15 percent, that CUNY and SUNY would keep 20 percent of that for investment purposes, and that was the first time in state history that SUNY and CUNY were able to keep a portion of the tuition revenue for investment. That was increased to 30 percent as per the agreement last year between the governor and the legislature. And that is supposed to incrementally grow by 10 percent each year until it gets to 50 percent in 2013. So that generated an additional 11 million. So the 11 million plus the 91 million in mandatory cost increases were offset by the 84 million in reductions to give us a net increase of 18 million. I just want to talk a little bit about the 84 million in reductions. There were two components of that. One was a $63.6 million reduction in operating aid to the senior colleges. The other piece was 20.8 million that the governor is hoping to generate through agreements with the labor unions to generate savings. And so what that specifically will mean for us is unknown yet in terms of how those savings are going to be generated, but those are going to be negotiated between the governor and the unions. The governor's budget also called for some changes and some flexibility for both SUNY and CUNY in terms of tuition and for procurement. And it was termed the New York State Public Higher Education Empowerment and Innovation Act. And it does several things. One is it grants authority to the Board of Trustees to increase tuition beginning in 2011 by no more than two and a half times the five-year rolling average of the HEPI index. Sure, as you all know, as part of the compact, universities have been calling for annual incremental tuition increases no larger than the HEPI index. And so this gives us some flexibility in terms of, you know, calls for two and a half times the rolling five-year average. Rolling five-year average is about 4 percent. In addition, it also grants the Board of Trustees, both SUNY and CUNY, the ability to grant differential tuition by both campus and by program. SUNY has been pushing the differential tuition by campus. CUNY has been on record pretty consistently over the last several years that we're interested in differential tuition by program. It also calls for the tuition revenue to be put off budget. And what that means is currently, the way state budget is structured, is that the state budget includes both state aid for CUNY and tuition revenue for CUNY in its appropriation. And so what this proposal calls for is that the tuition will be put offline in a separate account. And again, that would give the university more flexibility in the use of those dollars. And lastly, it calls for changes to the procurement guidelines that are currently in place. Currently, whenever we want to purchase something over $20,000 under state controller procurement guidelines, we have to go out and get three bids. We have to register the contract. We have to enter into the contract, and it could take several months before we actually receive that item on our campuses. And so what this flexibility legislation is calling for is for us to be on post audit so that we can go out and purchase the equipment, purchase the item, receive the services, and the state controller will then have us on a post audit. So that would be helpful for us in terms of our procurement, in terms of timing for our campuses. On the community colleges, the governor's proposal is calling for a reduction in the per FTE base aid amount of $285 per FTE, which is about $22 million. This comes on top of the $130 per FTE reduction that was included in the deficit reduction proposal, which we sustain this year. And when that annualizes for next year, that's in a, that will be $9 million. So we're looking at some hefty reductions at the community colleges on the state side. The state also recognized our need for additional rental aid at the community colleges, which is 1.8 million. And they recognized our enrollment growth in the base aid formula. So they recognized an additional 8,000 FTEs in the base aid formula, which is about $18 million. And while that offsets a good chunk of the $285 per FTE reduction, keep in mind that because of this higher enrollment, we have greater expenses. We have to hire more faculty. We have to keep the campuses cleaner in terms of maintenance and operation. We have to provide more student services. And so we really need this $18 million to be used for those expenses and not to offset a reduction. Lastly, in financial aid, the governor is proposing a reduction in all TAP awards of $75 per award. And in addition, the proposal calls for the, some ideas that were put forth last year, which the legislature rejected, they're calling for the elimination of TAP eligibility for all graduate students. They want to include all private pension income in TAP eligibility. And they want to make students who are in default of state and federal loans ineligible for TAP. They're also increasing the minimum standards that students must have in order to maintain their TAP eligibility. They must achieve a minimum of 15 credits by the end of their second semester, along with a 1.8 grade point index. So again, on the state side, definitely not a good news budget. While our mandatory needs are covered, we do have this $84.4 million reduction at the senior colleges. This comes on top of the last two years' worth of cuts. We received a $68 million cut to the senior college in 2009. In the current year, it was $53 million, so we have $121 million in cuts over the last two years. So certainly, we're concerned about the cumulative effect of this 84 million. And again, on the community college side, looking at a 285 base aid reduction per FTE on top of the $130 reduction that we took in the current year. Any questions about state budget?
Question. And we understand that this is only one budget, and there's other budgets, and it's a long way for, until we get final resolution. But is it your intention, issue any guidance to the, for example, the senior colleges in light of this initial governor's budget?
We briefed the council of presidents this morning in some detail, and there's going to be a series of individual meetings with each of the presidents by senior members of the administration, talking about enrollment patterns, talking about recent hires that they have done and hires that they hope to do in the future. So, and there's been a real drilling down into the bedrock of each of these institutions. So yes, there's been an extensive amount of guidance, and there's more yet to come.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Let me just spend a few minutes, so I'm at the city preliminary budget, which the mayor issued last Thursday. The mayor had put out a call letter to all agencies a few months back and asking for reductions in the current year of 4 percent and in 2011 of 8 percent. And for CUNY, that equated to $9.5 million in the current year and $15.4 million in 2011. And in the mayor's preliminary budget, those numbers held. So our reductions were not brought down. They were $9.5 million in the current year, $15.4 million next year. It's still early in the city budget process. The mayor's going to be issuing his executive budget most likely in late April, and then the city council will have their turn at the budget when we get to the adopted budget process. So it's still early. But again, we are very concerned about the community college situation, given the state reductions that we just talked about in the executive budget and these proposed reductions on the city side as well. So we have concerns with the community colleges. Two items I just want to point out about the city preliminary budget as well is the ASAP program was funded in the mayor's preliminary budget in 2011 and was increased from $6.5 million to $6.8 million. And in addition, CUNY prep, the CUNY prep program was also fully funded in 2011 at slightly under $3.6 million. But again, the peg reductions are the items that we're, you know, keeping an eye on, continuing our dialogue with both sides of City Hall, with the mayor's office, and with the council.
Okay. Any questions about the city budget? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Before we go on to the next item, I'd like to introduce to all the members Keith Lewis, who's here for the first time. Student Representative Keith from Lehman College.
Lehman College, yeah.
Welcome.
Welcome.
The next item on the agenda is, I believe, the report on investments. Janet, I saw your email to Mark Shaw. And I think I speak for everybody by saying that if you had told me a year ago today that the equity markets would have gone up in the 30 percent range, who would have believed it? But if you want to give a report, that's great.
I wouldn't have believed it.
No, I wouldn't have believed it.
You all would have increased our margin accounts.
Yeah, easily, yeah. We were running for the hills.
What a difference a year makes. And we're pleased to have Cambridge Associates, our investment consultant, with us today. Our Mark Fowler and Thomas Schmidt-Jefferson, and they will cover our portfolio, the changes that we have made, performance that we've had as a result of that, and the kind of development. And also, just to sum up, our steps.
Yeah, and after the report, I'd like to talk about the next steps in connection with the mix of the.
Okay. I think we'll start with just a broad overview of the economic picture and capital markets to set the stage for your investment performance, and then we can drill down to the investment program as much as you'd like to do. You know, your point about the markets being up to 30 percent for the year, particularly, I think it was this time last quarter, the markets had started off down almost 10 percent. So we've seen quite a rally. The good news is the stimulus seems to be working its way through the system. The question is now what? And the big question on everybody's mind is how is the stimulus going to be withdrawn without causing us to go into some sort of double dip recession? Or potentially, if it's not withdrawn fast enough, triggering some inflationary problems. So on the handouts that we provided, page one provides just a quick snapshot of the overall markets. And you'll see that this is through the third quarter in the top left-hand corner. GDP for the third quarter is up 2.2. Many of you are aware that the numbers for the fourth quarter, which are still preliminary, came in strong, up to 5.7 percent. So that's good news. In terms of the markets, you know, usually you see the biggest pop before the economic environment turns around, and that's one potential concern. Or, you know, if we looked at history, it would suggest that future returns might be a little bit more muted, which we think is particularly reasonable, given where we've come from and where current valuations are. But it'll really depend on how earnings come through. And right now, the consensus is in 2010, earnings will reach 90 percent of their peak levels, and in 2011, they'll reach, you know, nine or 10 percent above peak levels. If the earnings come in and disappoint, we could see some meaningful pullback. And as you know, we're not very good at predicting these things, but the, and we don't think there are a lot out there that can predict these things, but we do think there are some risk out there. And a lot of it's this unknown risk as far as what happens with the policymakers. So page one provides the snapshot of what's going on. We also see, you know, the top right, cash is trash. They're making it painful to hold cash right now with the Fed funds right close to zero. You're not earning anything on money market accounts these days. And the bond markets are starting to worry about inflation, so you're seeing an uptick in Treasury rates. On page two, provides a overview of the major capital markets. Focus you on the bottom part of the page. It shows you the returns for the full year. S and P was up 26.5 percent. And a couple of things worth pointing out, so you may recall, we talked about moving more overseas in terms of your investment portfolio. So things like international equities, which here is labeled world ex U.S. equities, was up 33.7 percent. Emerging markets was up 79 percent. So these are some of the areas where you've expanded or added to your exposure, and that certainly helped your portfolio results. Page three is our reminder that.
And the emerging markets, what, are we talking about the BRIC? Where are we talking specifically?
It's broadly based, but the BRICs are the largest component of that index. That include Taiwan, Korea, you know, Latin America broadly based.
And the European, the European emerging, so Czech Republic.
Eastern European.
Eastern European.
Yeah.
Page three is just a reminder that when the market is down 50 percent, you need to get, go up 100 percent in order to reach even. So this provides a snapshot of the returns that are needed to get back to par. So for the U.S. equity markets, it's close to 33 percent from today's levels. Non-U.S., it's 40 percent. Merging, it's 25. And the REIT market, you see, it's about 90 percent to get back to peak levels. So still ways to go, but we have made a dent. And then finally, page four provides just our overview of market valuations. And last year, you may recall, there were some areas that we thought were undervalued or very undervalued. With this market rally, this really pushed those valuations into the fairly valued category and into some areas that we also think are stretched. So there's no obvious places right now where you can find cheap assets. Any questions on the general market environment? I'll turn over to Thomas to talk about your results.
If we turn to page five, just before we get into the actual results, the page five has looks like this, and it basically talks about the asset allocation. You have the graphic down at the bottom, and you can see the blue line, the blue bars are where you are, and the gray bars is the asset allocation we set back in, I think, November of 2008. As you can see, there are some discrepancies between where we are and where we set out to be. Now, that's basically a reflection of two things. One, that we have taken a go-slow approach to it. We talked about that, given the uncertainty in the markets. We found it prudent to average into a lot of these areas, and that's what we have been doing, and so we haven't really, we haven't gotten there fully in some of the areas that we have made moves in, like real assets, like the non-U.S. equities. We actually, we did manage to get in there. But there are some areas, like hedge funds and non-marketable alternatives, that we haven't even started approaching yet. And that's sort of the other part of it, is that there are some things that we still have to discuss, or we haven't even started yet, just because we need to discuss how we approach that before we go further on. So just, that's just an example, and so that's why we are having these imbalances, if you will. The result, though, has been pretty good in 2009. Some of the areas that we haven't been in have not necessarily performed very well, and some of the areas that we were in and had over which to perform very well. So all in all, we haven't been hurt by the fact that we weren't in these various asset classes during the year.
Well, you, as the U.S. economy improves, how are you expecting the emerging markets and REITs to go? I know that's a very broad question, but.
And I think the answer is, it depends a little bit on your timeframe. We think there are risks in the emerging markets right now on a tactical basis, just because it's been up, you know, when it goes up 79 percent, there's certainly a risk of a pullback, and you saw some pullback in the latter part of January. Strategically, we do think that the emerging markets will still grow long-term more than the U.S. and the other developed economies, not just the U.S., but also the others. And we also think there's some currency imbalances that makes the emerging markets a very valid play long-term. So again, short-term worry, but long-term, good confidence in the fact that this is the right place to be. That doesn't say that we throw all the money in there, not at all. We have set a prudent target for it because they are volatile, but we are, we think we're, we might be moving there, and we think we should stay there.
Two questions.
Uh-huh.
First has to do with the allocate, when I, when I joined this committee, the target allocations had already been set. Are we ever going to look at the non-marketable alternatives versus the hedge funds? I personally would rather see more hedge funds and less non-marketable alternatives, but that's certainly a discussion for the committee as a whole. But that's more a comment. My question is, I understand why it's difficult to execute on the non-marketable alternatives. The hedge fund area leaves me a little less clear. I mean, those are not all that difficult to execute on. Why, why is it taking us so long to get anything in the hedge fund area?
I, yeah.
Professor Martel, as you note, about a month ago, I sent a memo out to all the members. Right. And I responded. And thank you. And I appreciate it, your response. I would like to, you know, we need to have a meeting of the committee. When we first started this allocation, there was a thought at the time, about a year, year and a half ago. Not the right time. Hedge funds were in a freefall. Private equity market was questionable at the time. Alternative investments, we need to revisit that again. That was the purpose of the memo. We should be having a meeting sometime in, probably early March, and we'll let the secretary determine exactly when that meeting will be, the investment committee. At that point, we should. But in the meantime, I will ask Horrigan, if she can, or if, Mary, if you could mention to her, to resend the memo again for me. And I would encourage everyone to read it and get back and think about it, because we need to, as a, as a committee, come together and decide what we want to do on that portion of the non-marketable and the 5 percent hedge funds and the 10 percent other funds, determine if we can get into that. Thank you for the question, too.
If we move to, sorry.
Sorry.
If we move to page nine, which is the actual performance. You see that at the end of the year, the asset stood at 146.6, and again, like Mark's exhibit with 50 percent down and what it takes to get up again, we're not quite back to the peak of where you were back in late 2007. But certainly, this year was a good step in that direction. Your, your performance for the calendar year was 23.8 percent, which is certainly a good result in any book, in any year. And it also is a good both absolute and relative performance. We track the median of our clients, and right now, it's about 21.4 percent. You're in the 31st percentile, with obviously the number one being, first percentile being the best. So that's a very respectable performance. And really, the steps that the committee took during the year has helped quite a lot. The areas that we went into were all contributing to, contributing to performance. So international equities, emerging markets, real assets are all things that both on an absolute basis, but also on a relative basis, helped performance this year. And you can see that very clearly, if you go up that line, the calendar year-to-date line, you can see that at, in absolute terms, international, U.S. equities, and convertible bonds. And then you can see the emerging markets and the real assets, even though they weren't there for the full year, they all pulled up in the annual performance in absolute terms. But also, on a relative basis, the non-U.S. especially was a big performer for us this year, and that was something that we added to quite early in the year. Emerging markets outperformed nicely with our manager Aberdeen. Real assets was a real winner. We only had it for half a year, but they, they had a performance of 21.3 percent in that half year, and outperformed their benchmark quite substantially. And then finally, the bonds were also a good, absolute return driver. If we go into the, the one, the only, the tractor, and we'll get into that, was the convertible bond on a relative basis. They were good on an absolute basis, but there is a good reason why they performed like they did, and I'll get into a little bit more detail there. On page 10. You can see that, and we did quite a lot of inter-manager movements and manager terminations during the years. Remember, we terminated some of the small-cap managers and other managers that we felt less comfortable with, started more indexing. And actually, the only, in the U.S. equity space, the only active managers we had left at the, at the end of the year was Up and High by large-cap growth. Now, unfortunately, the PM of that fund left the company in early January, and as a consequence, we had to terminate them because they were, well, they were basically without, without a viable PM, we thought. So as of now, we have it all indexed, and that's not, I think, the ultimate plan. So that's certainly something that's going to come up in the following meetings, is how we redeploy that asset into, into a mixed active and passive mandate. International equities, we had Philadelphia, which we decided to keep after some consideration, and they have performed, it was a good decision. They have performed stellar in 2009, and are really on track to mend some of the issues that they had back, and have really been a very strong performer. And then the index is also done, obviously, just because the whole, the whole area went well. We hired them at the right time, and that was good, too. And then the final, the new manager, Walter Scott, that we just hired at the last meeting, it's too early, really, to say anything. They should have a good January, though, because Japan has generally been a good performer for January, and they're on track, and no, no big issues there. Aberdeen is also been a, been a strong performer in the time we've had them, which is actually, I wouldn't say slightly surprising. We wouldn't necessarily think that they would keep up like they did in this roaring market, emerging markets. But they did, and that's, that's obviously positive. They have redeployed something, pulled back a little bit from Asia in order to be more, a little more conservative going into the new year, and we think that's, that's not a bad thing necessarily. And then Wellington, as you remember, you might recall, that was the one where we talked about the manager moving to Hawaii, and we are happy to report that he's, that is actually working out very well for Wellington. Not only have the performance been great, half a year might be a little too early to really read a lot into the performance, but we've had several meetings with the, with the team, and, and we can see that the interaction between him and the team is very strong, even despite that, that physical dislocation, if you will.
Should Philadelphia be moved to Hawaii at this point?
I'm not sure there's, there's total causality there, but certainly, in Wellington's case, it makes sense also, because he, a lot of that is really thinking macro, and that is possible to do, maybe actually being away from Boston and sort of the daily news stream might be a positive if you're thinking these more macro-oriented thoughts. And that's what, what he is doing. So that's positive. Advent Capital is sort of the, on an absolute basis, a good performer. On a relative basis, they've been a pretty serious underperformer. But the reason is that they do hold the more high-quality convertible bonds, and this market has been junky in that the lowest quality has outperformed, and so we're actually pretty comfortable with, with where they are. Now, the, we still have to talk about the. Now, the, we, we still have to talk about the, how, how we, how we deal with that as they, as we go further, and especially the conversation we're going to have about hedge funds and, and alternatives will probably have an impact, but we'll see how, how that, how that goes. In terms of the fixed income portfolio, both managers outperformed. That in itself is not that impressive, because practically every active manager outperformed, because active managers do this, they hold less treasuries and they hold more corporates, and that's exactly what worked this year. So our active manager median for core managers like these two is about 8.1%, so they were basically performing in line with peers. But still, I had a respectable outperformance versus benchmark versus, as you may remember. So, so basically, a very good year that, that we're happy with, that we think we made the right move. The, our cautious approach in a roaring bull market may, may have hurt us a little bit, but, but again, nobody could know where the markets would go and the budget when we made these decisions, so we still think that that was the prudent thing to do. It certainly dampened volatility of the overall product, so we think that we, we, we're on track. Any questions to managers or performance in general?
I, I think certainly, you know, if we look at where we are this time last year, when we had some initial discussions, and, and there was a lot of fear and trembling on our part in terms of how this whole portfolio will be managed, you know, I think that, that, you know, as a team, you know, you've been able to steer this in the right direction, being cautious, you know, but yet prudent, and, and we see the results from it. Just to commend, you know, the team for a job well done.
I agree. I wish I took your advice personally. I'm long fixed income. I thought it was a safe way to go. It was, actually, it is, it just doesn't grow. Are there any further questions or comments? Barry, if I can, or Janet, the memo regarding alternative investments to send out, could we, could you include the chancellor on that, because I noticed it wasn't, he was supposed to ask him to see it as well? If you have a copy today to give him, that would be helpful. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that? Right. And then Peter is new to the, 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 the committee, if he should also. He's sent them, I don't have, I have the verse version that I marked up, I don't intend to hand it out to everyone. Okay. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Barry, what time? Time for KPMG again?
Yes, we have time.
It's been a year already?
It's been a year more than I have.
I think they come in more often than I do.
Thank you, Joe. So this is the, the first appearance for the year of KPMG. We'll have a second appearance probably at the April meeting when we have a chance to talk about the A133 audit, as well as the management letter, the internal control report. But today, we want to speak about the financial statements, the, let me just, before I introduce everybody, just note that this was the first year that we did the financial statements using the new general ledger in the CUNY first implementation. There were a number of challenges, I won't go into those here, but we could talk about them, I think, at the, at the next meeting. But this was the first time that we did that, and we look forward to that becoming a more routine type of, of an audit and an exercise as we implement more of the modules under the CUNY first. I want to introduce several people who were, who were with us today, and that is, to my left is Tom Zhao. Tom is the interim university assistant controller, and is the person really responsible for coordinating the compilation of the financial statements, and just did a, just an excellent job working with the staff and with the auditors. To Tom's left is Shelley Massey. Shelley is the partner in charge at KPMG, and is the person who, I guess, has the final say as to whether or not the financial statements pass muster. And to Shelley's left is Aaron Shinbari, who is the senior manager and who is the person who is directing the staff on a day-to-day basis. So let me turn this over to Shelley and ask her to begin, and then we can answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Barry. Today, we have passed out a PowerPoint presentation. It is to summarize the audit of the financial statements. We did issue the consolidated CUNY financial statements, as well as a senior college-only report, which includes just the senior colleges with all of their component units, which is issued for the purpose of the state of New York. And both of those reports were issued back in November. We'll begin by going through the required communications, and please, as I go through, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me. Beginning on page one, our responsibility, we have a responsibility to conduct the audit in accordance with auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States of America, and under the standards applicable to financial audits that are contained in government auditing standards. And we do issue the report under government auditing standards, since we do also issue an audit of the university's federal expenditures. And that report will incorporate the audited statements that were issued back in November. We do and have issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, that is a clean opinion. And with respect to the foundations of all of the colleges, we do rely on the opinions of the foundation auditors. So they are all separately audited by their own auditors, and we do receive those issued financial statements for our review. We do have a responsibility to review those financial statements to ensure that they do reasonably present the foundation activity, but we have not actually audited, audited them ourselves. We also do confirm with the foundation auditors to ensure that they are independent, not just with the foundation that they are auditing, but they also need to be independent with the university as well. In carrying out our audit responsibility, we have planned and performed the audit to obtain reasonable, but not absolute assurance, that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And with respect to internal controls, we have tested internal controls over all of the key processes at the university, including cash and investments, tuition billings and collections, procurement, human resources, and financial reporting. And there was one item identified this year in terms of an internal control deficiency as it relates to financial reporting. Management identified two component units that had previously not been incorporated in the CUNY's consolidated financial statements. One was the City University Economic Development Corporation, which had equity at the end of 2008 of approximately $7 million. And the second entity was a new entity that was formed the end of 2008 called Q Student Residences, was the entity that issued debt under the Queen's College for purposes of a new dorm. That entity had really no equity at the end of 2008, since it had just been formed in April. Later on in the presentation, I'll review what we considered in terms of the materiality, but we did not consider these items to be material enough to obviously reissue the statements from the previous year. So the equity from the Economic Development Corporation of $7 million was included in the 2009 activity on the statement of changes, to bring that into the consolidated report. In terms of the timing of the audit, the interim procedures are performed at the college campuses from May through August, and then the year-end procedures are performed primarily centrally at that point in September and October. Continuing on to page two, there were no changes in significant accounting policies, and they are discussed in note two to the basic financial statements. And there was a significant unusual transaction that we identified during 2009, the university issued refunding bonds of slightly over $1 billion, and the proceeds of these bonds were used to defuse existing debt of, at $1 billion. There was an economic gain that related to this transaction of approximately $99 million, so that's the future savings that the defeasance resulted in. There was an accounting loss, which is essentially a book loss, where the costs from the existing debt needed to be written off, and that related to approximately $23 million. Continuing on page three, there are various management judgments and accounting estimates that are embedded within the financial statement. We have a responsibility to review these, ensure that the assumptions used by management are considered reasonable, and we also look to ensure that the assumptions used from one year to the next and the methodology used by management is consistent from year to year. The most significant of these judgments and estimates are included here. The first is the classification of net assets. The net assets are classified based on restrictions. So there's unrestricted equity, there's restricted expendable, restricted non-expendable, and invested in plant. So we do ensure that the classification is appropriate, we are reviewing any external documentation to ensure that if there is a restriction, it's being incorporated into the right net asset category. We also look to ensure that the current and non-current classifications of assets and liabilities are appropriate, and that the presentation of scholarship allowance and expense is appropriately displayed on the statement of changes. Some of the allowance is shown net of tuition, and some other portions are considered an expense. We also look at the allowance for doubtful accounts and loans to ensure that the reserve is reasonable. We look at aging and cash collections and the history and the methodology that management is using to determine that reserve. And lastly, valuation of investments, both for marketable and the non-marketable alternatives. And we do have another slide on this, so I'll hold off on that until we get there. Page four includes audit adjustments that were identified as part of the audit. The first two were university-related, and the first item was previously mentioned, it was the recording of the prior period activity of the component in the EDC. The second item related to the mapping of accounts, and was actually something that management identified during the new system implementation. As the accounts were being mapped from the old system to the new system, it was identified that there were a few accounts that were mapped to liabilities when they should have been mapped to equity. And over the years, there was a debit of $8.3 million that over time should have been incorporated into the equity of the organization. So when we looked at the audit differences and determined the materiality level, the $7 million and the $8.3 million are going in opposite directions. So the equity impact is only $1.3 million, which is clearly immaterial on the university's financial statements.
But the, the impact occurred in different years, right?
They incur, it was just prior years, I mean, the individual years.
It looks like the $7 million is a current year, but the $8.3 million occurred over time.
No, the $7 million and the $8.3 million are both prior period activity that we netted and recorded in the current, current year.
So that there's no, there's no timing issues here that would make a material impact on a prior statement?
No.
Thank you.
We did look for, 2008, we did look at the impact on the statement of changes just for 2008, and that was immaterial as well. The other two items related to the foundations, and as I previously mentioned, while we don't audit the foundation's financial statements, because they are incorporated in CUNY's reporting entity, we do have a responsibility to review these and ensure that they are reasonably presented. And there were two items that I considered significant enough to bring to the committee today. The first item was something that actually the foundation auditors identified during the current year. They, it was for City College Foundation, and the auditors identified $9.7 million that was sitting in permanently restricted, that should have been recorded in temporarily restricted. So the auditors did actually restate the foundation's financial statements. At the foundation level, $9.7 million was material. For purposes of CUNY's financial statements, again, we did not consider $9.7 million to be material, so we were restating for that, we did just show it as a transfer in the foundation activity.
Which City College Foundation was that?
The one that's called City College Foundation, is there one just called?
City College Fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
And did the $9.7 million represent one actual contribution that was temporarily restricted?
What it represented was earnings on permanently restricted gifts. What had previously been happening was some earnings on permanently restricted gifts were being recorded in permanently restricted, but the foundation had the ability to spend it.
To spend it, I got it.
Yes. So they, yeah, and this is actually, the foundations are under FASB guidelines, so it is a little bit different.
It's a FASB recording.
Yeah. The...
I don't recall. We could find out, I, I don't remember.
These are, yes, yes.
The account, am I right in saying this, that the accountants for the fund itself were actually more conservative than they needed to be? These were funds that were available for them, folks?
Yes.
Right.
The second item relates to the Graduate School Foundation, and it was something that we identified during our review. And we had noticed that the foundation, the Graduate School Foundation, had released from restrictions. So this was a reclass from temporarily restricted to unrestricted of $4.7 million. However, from talking with Graduate School Foundation management, we realized that they had actually issued the financial statements with that release and error. So it really should still be in temporarily restricted because it's for purposes of a building, and that building is not yet complete. So we identified it as an error that management needed to represent, that they considered it to be immaterial, we considered it to be immaterial. And this is a timing difference, because as that building does get complete, the, it will be long and unrestricted.
Can I ask a question about these foundation audits? You said you review the reasonableness with which the audits are presented. Does that include, or do you have a point of view about the professionalism and the competence of the audit firms that are handling the foundation audits? And are you satisfied with that?
As part of the independence confirmation that I do send to all of the partners who are responsible, I do ask them if they're aware of what standards that they are reporting under, and that they're using generally accepted accounting standards, and, and if they are using government accounting standards. So those are really the extent of the questions that I'm asking.
Are these firms known to you professionally?
Yes, yes. We also do a, a check of all of the firms to ensure that they're not, I guess, under state watch, or, so we do have websites that we look at to ensure that the firms are respectable, and they don't have any, you know, judgments or claims against them, or, you know, their clients are not suing them. So we did not notice any of that in terms of doing that part of our review. On page five, our other required communications, we do have a responsibility to review documents that contain the audited financial statements, as well as the independent auditors' report. There were no disagreements with management, no known consultation with management by other accountants, or by management with other accountants, sorry. No major issues discussed with management prior to our retention, there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, there were no significant changes to the planned audit scope that we first communicated with management. And the significant written communications between us and management include the engagement letter that sets the fees and the scope of the audit at the beginning of the engagement, the management representation letter that is signed by management prior to the issuance of the financial statements, and the management letters, which we will be reviewing with you in April.
Question?
Yes.
The, I would have been on this committee since June. What's the involvement of the audit committee in the audit scope?
Is it a question?
Typically, typically, the audit committee reviews the scope of the audit and is comfortable with the scope of the audit before the audit's done. Is that a normal practice here?
I think that's, that has varied in, in, in various years. Usually when KPMG has been, has been, come on to the audit, I think we would send the materials to it, to the audit committee. We did not do it this past year, but if the committee wishes to, we could certainly include that as part of the, of the process.
Because typically, there's communications, specific communications with the audit committee, and I don't see them listed here. Is that something we, as a committee, decide we don't want, or? I'm just, I'm just curious.
The communication would in the past go to the, to the vice chancellor for the, for the engagement letter, and then there would be a discussion with the audit, with the, with the full committee, rather than the audit committee, unless the audit committee were to be meeting as a, as a committee of the... a committee of the, of the audit. But there'd be a discussion as to what the, what the audit was to consist of and the work that KPMG would be doing. But there had not been a formal communication to the audit committee.
For the record, my experience is that there's direct communication between the accountant, accounting firm doing the audit and the audit committee. I, you know, it's obviously the committee's call, but...
You're the new chair of the committee. Just, you know, now that Mark is now the interim vice chancellor or senior vice chancellor who was chairman of the committee, the chairman of the, fortunately, I don't sit on the audit committee, so I'm not part of it, but Peter Pantaleo is now the chairman of the audit committee. We will sit and talk about the process.
And lastly, with our required communications on page six, we are considered to be independent with the university. This is something that we do review on an annual basis. And there were no management advisory services performed by KPMG during the year. That concludes the required communications. I'm going to have Erin walk us through the next three slides.
On page seven of the materials, I'm just going to talk about our consideration of fraud in the financial statement audit. During the financial statement audit, we meet with various senior management to discuss the risk of fraud and where they think the risk of fraud lies. It helps us to tailor audit procedures if needed to address those risks. And we also maintain an overall heightened sense of awareness while we're performing our audit procedures to look for the risk of fraud. We do not identify any pervasive financial fraud risks during our audit. Statement on auditing standards number 99, which is the requirement that ensures that we meet with various individuals and address the risk of fraud in the audit, it does have two specific risks that are presumed by the statement, which is the risk of misstatement relating to revenue recognition, and also the risk of management override of internal controls. As it relates to the risk of management override on internal controls, it specifically talks about journal entries and post-closing journal entries, significant accounting estimates, as well as significant and unusual transactions. We reviewed a number of journal entries throughout the audit to ensure that they were properly reviewed by the individuals that should be reviewing them. We also made sure that there was proper supporting documentation for those journal entries. As it relates to the significant accounting estimates that Shelley noted on page three, we reviewed those and deemed them to be reasonable. And the only unusual transaction we noted was also mentioned by Shelley earlier, was the refunding of the bonds, which we also reviewed. And we didn't any, identify any other specific risks as it relates to fraud during the audit. On page eight, being that investments is a significant area for the, for the university, we laid out the procedures that we perform over the investments. We reviewed internal controls, as Shelley mentioned earlier. We confirmed 100% of the balances with the investment managers and custodians of the university. We confirm purchases and sales of investments. We also performed market value, valuation price tests over the investments, performed an investment income reasonableness test, as well as tests worked over realized gains and losses. We reviewed deposit and investment risk disclosures in the financial statements. We reviewed management's valuation assessment for alternative investments, and we reviewed the investment portfolio for any significant exposure to subprime or hard-to-value investments, and we didn't find anything material. And on page nine, we just wanted to bring to your attention a new statement on auditing standards number 115, which relates to communicating internal control matters identified in an audit. Previously, we were under SaaS 112, and this year, the university is under SaaS 115, which just aligns the definitions of material weakness and significant deficiencies to be more in line with the PCAOB. And the definition for material weakness stayed the same, and, but the definition for significant deficiency is a little different than SaaS 112, and it's identified here for you, which, as Shelley mentioned earlier, we did have a significant deficiency.
The last three slides, just wanted to bring to your attention a few, a new accounting standards that are going to be applicable for next year's audit. So for this year, there were no new accounting standards, and next year, there are two plus something else that's going to impact the A133. The first item here is GASB statement number 51, accounting and financial reporting for intangible assets. This addresses the accounting and financial reporting for intangible assets, including internally generated assets, but includes such intangible assets such as trademarks, copyrights, patents, and easements. We are discussing this with management currently and determining whether or not there is anything that the university would need to be recording. If there is anything of a material nature, these items that were previously not recorded by the university will be recorded next year as part of capital assets. The other new item on page 11 is GASB statement number 53, accounting and financial reporting for derivative instruments. And this will impact the university, as it currently does have many swaps. The swap values are required to be disclosed at fair value in accordance with a GASB Technical Bulletin number 2003-1. So for about the last five years now, the university has been disclosing the fair value of these swaps. And currently, at the end of June 30th, 2009, they were in a liability position of approximately $45 million. The requirement for next year is to record the fair value of these derivatives on the face of your balance sheet. This is very similar to a FASB statement that came out about five or seven years ago that required all FASB organizations to record derivative instruments on their balance sheet. And then the change in fair value from one year to the next will be recorded in your statement of changes. So as the fair value fluctuates, similarly to investments, the change in that fair value will be reported annually.
Question? Who does the valuation? I mean, do we do it, or do you have an outside?
It's generally the counterparty, I believe. So the counterparty is generally the bank. And then we, as part of our procedures, while it's not recorded on the face of the balance sheet, we do consider it a significant valuation disclosure. We do have internal valuation specialists at KPMG that do review those valuations.
But you're prepared to accept the bank's?
Yes, yes. We've been doing it. So this is not going to be something that's going to be difficult to adopt. I mean, we already have the value. It'll just be reported on the balance sheet next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, I was about to say that. Thank you, Chancellor.
They do as well.
This is primarily DASNY debt that is affected by this.
The last item is on page 12, and is, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, ARA fines. We are aware that the university has and may be receiving some more ARA money. And the ARA funds, in terms of the federal OMB circular A133, will be required to be audited similarly to how we audit your student financial assistance funds that are also received from the federal government. ARA funds will be separately identified on your schedule of federal expenditures, and we will have to consider them to be a high-risk program. That is something that was designated by the federal government. So in most cases, this money will need to be audited by us in the future. We do know that the university has received some ARA funds through federal work study. That's already audited by us every year. They've also received some federal monies to supplement the TAP program. And the community colleges have received, received some ARA funds to supplement their appropriations. So those areas, you'll be seeing those most likely as major programs next, for the next audit.
Shelley, just a question, the second bullet, that the ARA stimulus money is considered high-risk. What, can you develop that?
Yeah, yeah. The federal circular A133 has provided definitions for programs to be either high-risk or low-risk. And if a program meets certain requirements, it can be low-risk unless designated by the federal government. So the federal government is designating all ARA programs to be high-risk.
What does that mean?
That means that they will almost always need to be audited. Generally, there's a threshold by the, by the federal government in stating what's a type A or a type B program. And type A programs are generally the only ones audited. Very, it's very unlikely to see a program that falls below the threshold need to be audited. But in this case, because they're high-risk, high-risk programs below the threshold may need to be audited.
Is the purpose of the audit to determine that the money was used as a legislative?
Yes, because in the last bullet, the spending is expected to be transparent, and they do want auditors to audit a lot of these dollars. And that's how they did that, by designating them as high-risk programs.
Yeah, it's great business, really. The A is ARA's accounting spread.
I just want to, and then one thing that Shelley said on the ARA funds, and that is they were not supplementing money coming into the university, they were actually replacing money. The federal work study was supplement, that was additional money, but in the state last year had actually decided to switch some state appropriation money for the ARA funds. So that was for both the community college and for the...
To the benefit, sure.
To the benefit of the state, right. So that was both the community college funds that came in as well as the TAP funds.
So the federal money came in, the states, we're going to take ours back and put this in place.
Right.
That's high-risk.
Was it even swapped with ARA?
That's a good point. It was a stimulus for KPMG, I think.
Yes, Professor Martel.
When we talk about high-risk programs, does that translate into fines if we don't pass the audit?
No, no.
That's not that kind of problem?
No, no, it's, right.
Subject to audit.
Typically, when you get extra attention, you also get fines if you're not doing well. That's...
All right.
Thank you.
And I, you know, following up with what Alan said, I know how difficult it is with so many different campuses and the relative perceived independence of some of the campuses. Doing the audit can be always tricky, and thank both of you, all of you. Any further questions? Any further comments? Moved to adjourn? No moves. Okay. All in favor, say aye. See you next time.
Thank you.
Committee on faculty staff?